Well, good morning and welcome to the February 20th, whoops, it says 2019.
Oh, sorry, it's the 20.
What happened in 2019? We can bring it back.
No, that was a long time ago.
I forgot. It's 02-20-20-20.
Ooh. It's kind of like Savis, right?
Almost.
Yeah. Mr. Administrator, Gary Schmidt, please take the role.
Yes, Chair. First staff support today, Andrew Naris, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board. Role call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in plights of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Gary, I think we have a special guest today.
Yes, we do, Commissioners. Congressman Earl Blumenauer is here, visiting the county this morning, and we welcome him to come forward and share a few words, please.
Thank you for taking the time to come out and see us here in beautiful Clackamas County on this sunny day, which is always sunny in Clackamas.
Always sunny in Clackamas County. Well, I appreciate your courtesy in permitting me to join you this morning. It's been my privilege for my entire tenure in Congress to have represented various portions of Clackamas County over the years. It's maybe 90% of the land area and about maybe 35% of the population, that varies, but the commitment to work cooperatively with the county is one that I feel very strongly about. I looked at the honor roll of Commissioners over there, and over the years, I've had the privilege of working with about two dozen men and women who've occupied your roles. And we've all remarked, and I think it's something that is not widely appreciated enough, that for all intents and purposes, Clackamas County is the best approximation of Oregon. The diversity that you have in terms of the population, the economic base, you have working-class neighborhoods, you have high-end, you have a wide range of economic activities, the natural resource, the agriculture, it really does reflect what Oregon is and Oregon's past and its future. I am pleased to be able to work with you as we move forward so that hopefully the federal government is the partner you deserve. You have a lot of federal managed land in the county. There is interaction with a variety of programs that you rely on. I've got to somehow stop this machine. I really apologize.
We can't hear it.
Oh, I hate these things. And I'm so technologically challenged, I just got a new one, and I'm not doing a good job turning it off. It is now off. I apologize for my Star Wars ringtone.
You don't have to apologize to him.
Big fan, big fan, thank you. Okay. On that note, I do apologize for the interruption. We've had an opportunity to spend time earlier this morning with your team dealing with the housing challenges that you have that reflect both the metropolitan regions. Priceless. I thought I had it turned off. I apologize, I'll do that again. You share those challenges throughout the metropolitan area, and indeed, it is a challenge nationally, that we have a housing crisis in virtually every community. I appreciate what you're doing as a county and individually to be part of a solution. And you've been working with your constituents to help understand the challenges and what we do cooperatively going forward. I suspect there's nothing that greater epitomizes the overall challenge we face than being able to make sure that all our citizens have a place to sleep tonight, they have an opportunity to have stable housing, they have an opportunity to be part of the wealth-generating mechanism, which is homeownership, which is the source of most middle-income family wealth in the United States, is a path to the middle class. We have put out a recent report on what the federal government should do, because partnership is something that you are doing a great job with people in the metropolitan areas. And as I look at the honor roll and think back over the years, it hasn't always been sweetness and light and harmony in the metropolitan area. But I will say that I have never seen more cooperation than I've seen with your fellow county Commissioners and major jurisdictions, and a commitment to working together to solve the problems. You need a federal partnership that keeps up its end of the obligation, whether it's housing, transportation, management of public lands. And I look forward to our being able this year to be able to help spotlight things together that we want to make a difference with that federal partnership, and with a new Congress and a new administration, be able to make more progress. But in the meantime, we're all in it together. We're trying to communicate potential solutions, understanding. A lot of what you work on, on a daily basis, appears to some people to be counterintuitive because there are a whole host of things that you don't have total control over. There's great complexity, mixing of funds, conflicting mandates, and of course, your constituents sometimes have different views amongst themselves that you have to navigate. But I look forward to being your partner. I appreciate the courtesy today, look forward to moving from here over to the Falls, and look at that exciting aspect of a project that has been waiting to be born. And I think you've been able to create the circumstances where we're finally going to recognize the potential down there.
Thank you. Wear a raincoat.
Oh, yeah, he'll get wet.
Any additional comments?
Well, I just wanted to thank the Congressman for his quiet listening this morning. It's wonderful to have someone like you who really embeds what the needs are of the county, and we appreciate that. And I'm going to let my colleagues know that I am accompanying Congressman Blumenauer to the Falls this morning. Both Commissioner Savis and I serve on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, but I wanted to say goodbye to this man because it's his last day in the House of Representatives.
One more.
Oh, one more next week? Okay, so I'll say goodbye now and again next week then. Thank you, okay.
Paul? I just want to just recognize that I appreciate your advocacy in Washington DC for transportation funding. We haven't really got where we want to get yet, but you have been a stalwart supporter of trying to get that key transportation funding. And I just want to just say that I was impressed by the passion you bring to the table there, as well as Congressman DeFazio as well. So we're pleased and I think somewhat happy that you're there fighting on our behalf.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and may the force be with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you. Well, the next agenda item is a Housing Authority Consent Agenda, and I'd like to announce that the Board will recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority on the next item, and again introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Paul Reynolds.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today, and what's up, Gary?
Mary will read the consent agenda.
Okay, we have three items on the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Adoption of revisions of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County bylaws. We have approval of Amendment Number One to the service contract between the Housing Authority and Mental Health Association of Oregon for peer support services for families living in housing, families living in housing. And also, we have approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement between Health Housing and Human Services and the Housing Authority of Clackamas County for additional peer support services.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners wish to remove an item from this consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Excuse me, my apologies.
Say that again.
I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you again for your coming today, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll announce that the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Up first is Citizen Communication. We have Wendy and Greg. Please come on up. Thank you for coming today, and just give us your, where you live and your names.
Good morning. I'm going to go first. Greg Chinello is my name, Judd Road, Eagle Creek, Oregon. And I've got a short, little say here I'd like to just present. Notifications Distances of Planning Permits. Notification distances need to be relative to the impact of the change that's being submitted. Example, is this an elderly member needing care and having a mobile unit brought in? Or is this a major weapon-shooting facility? Obviously, the impact of dramatic differences affected by this change need to be considered in deciding the distance of these notifications. Considering the common sense issue here, I am sure this must have been discussed in the past. So I would like to see a meaningful and critical improvement made in determining notification distances relative to the impact of the surrounding neighborhood or area based on what the change would be. Result, those affected would have the opportunity to voice their concerns, which is really the reason for these notifications anyway. And thank you all.
I'll have Wendy, and then Ken wants to make some comments.
Unless you have any questions.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Wendy Chinello. Greg and I have been residents on Judd Road and Eagle Creek. I'm, Greg's a 47-year resident, I'm a 33-year resident out there. I just have a prepared statement regarding the same topic. As in many parts of Clackamas County, the area of Eagle Creek has grown immensely with many new homes in the 33 years that I've lived there, and it's still rural with most people owning acreage of some type. Today, I'd like to address the need to evaluate and hopefully increase the notification distances when planning permits are applied for with Clackamas County by giving the example of our current situation in our neighborhood. We're located one mile as a crow flies from the current Douglas Ridge Rifle Club, which is in the valley on Highway 224 in Eagle Creek, and we hear the shooting noise from the range daily, 8 to sunset, and weekends, 9 to sunset. In October 2019, we came home to a handwritten nail, sign nailed to a power pole at the end of our driveway. This was our notification that the DRC had applied for a non-conforming use permit to remove 14 acres of timber on timber-zoned land that they own at the top of Douglas Ridge. This ridge is where the three miles of Judd Road and all its side streets run. The purpose of the removal of timber was to construct a 10-bay, 150-parking-space outdoor shooting range. This new range would be approximately one-half mile from our home. Their plan is to use a new facility as a short-range shooting range, moving all of their short shooting as well as their competitions from down below to up above. The only notifications the county, the only notifications from the county that were mailed out were to those within 750 feet, as is apparently county ordinance. We have confirmed that the sound from the current range can be heard at least 2.4 miles northeast. Because most of the properties are 2-plus acres and larger, the majority of those affected by the current sound were not notified. Had it not been for one of the few neighbors that received a notice telling another, we would not have heard of this application or have been given an opportunity to respond to its impact on us. If this facility is built, it would not only create more noise and probably cause devaluation of our homes, but also bring more traffic to Judd Road. This could and most probably would create a safety issue for the current residents that drive, bike, walk, and live on Judd Road. Yet, we were not notified by the county so that we might be given the opportunity to protect our livability and investment in our homes. To wrap up, when a project of this size and scope is proposed, there must be a better criterion in place by the county planning department to determine the number of residents that will be impacted so that these residents have an opportunity to respond. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I'm going to have Steve come up, and then Ken, you can make your comments.
Thank you.
Thanks. Steve, go ahead.
My name is Steve Chinello. I live in Beaver Creek. I am a registered voter, a member of the Clark's Highland CPO and Highland Butte Neighborhood Watch Citizens that I co-founded. I am here again today to ask the Commissioners to take a proactive approach in regards to land use applications and issues, and extend the neighborhood notification distance from 750 feet to at least one mile in our rural areas of Clackamas County. Last year, on several occasions, the Spangler-Carris Coalition addressed the need for better and greater neighbor notification from planning and you, the Commissioners, in regards to land use applications. The need for this is due to the undeniable fact that in rural communities, the track of land size are greater and have a lot more variances in which 750-foot notification limit does not accurately cover the area in which neighbors will be greatly impacted by any kind of activity. And in some cases, neighbors are not even being notified by the county, especially in what we are seeing today with the urban citizens wanting to come out to the rural areas and industrialize our rural communities. It does not matter if it is a marijuana grow, a rifle range, or any kind of industrialization, the impact is greater than one mile, whether it is odor, constant noise, or traffic, the increased constant activity that takes away from our ability to live in peace and enjoy our properties. Extending the notification distance for our rural communities is the right thing to do, and it's necessary that all will have a fair opportunity to address land use applications and issues. The 750-foot notification for our rural communities is not adequate and is unfair to the rural communities. So please, again, in the rural areas, extend the neighborhood notification distance to at least one mile. And on a side note, I also want to add, if this is a money issue with increasing notifications, it should be passed on to the applicant. In closing, I would actually like to ask the Commissioners a question, because this topic has been kind of lingering for a year. I would like to hear at this time from each of you Commissioners on where you stand on this issue.
Okay. Ken, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I think you know where I stand on it, because I brought this forward as a result of the Spangler-Carris folks and their concerns about this very same issue, and this Board supported that, and staff are working on it. I will tell you that these things do take time because they have other projects that they are working on. They usually have a plan that's a two-year plan, so when you throw something into the mix, it does definitely interfere with the processes that they have to follow, but they are working on it. For the benefit of people listening, this will go to a hearing officer, and then if it does not go the way people want, then it goes to LUBA, doesn't come to this board, but people should understand that process. Tuesday, again for people who are listening, Tuesday, we will be hearing from staff with their recommendations. I don't know that we'll get as far as you would like to go, but hopefully, we can do better than we're currently doing. The, I had a couple of other things I wanted to share with you on that, but it's escaped me at the moment, but hopefully, we'll do better than we've been able to do. The 750 feet doesn't work, I agree with you, and hopefully, we'll make that better.
And my question is, the process to extend the distance of communication, does that require a hearing? Or is that just a policy decision?
I don't know. Staff are going to be coming to us on Tuesday with this, and I did remember what the last thing was. I really encourage people to go to clackamas.us. You can check off a box on clackamas.us on a wide variety of subjects, and you will receive email notifications on a wide variety of subjects, including land use planning. So I strongly encourage people to do that. It's a very easy way to stay in touch with what's going on in Clackamas County, and also makes it easy for you to share it with your friends and neighbors.
So, did the CPO get notice?
Yes. The Eagle Creek, Barton Eagle Creek CPO did get notice.
Yeah, okay.
And they are involved, from what I understand.
So I'm definitely in support of increasing the notification in rural communities. I can't imagine that's a big expense when you talk of rural community, but I agree that we should pass that on to the applicant if it's at all possible to do that. Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think the comment, earlier comment about the impacts being proportional, the notification being proportional to the impacts, and, you know, sound travels of longer distance versus, you know, application for either a setback or, you know, something minor that doesn't have that much impact, right? This is a little bit different. And right around the same time this came up, I had brought forward in the discussion a friend of mine who lives in south of Oregon City, and a lot of shooting, just a neighboring property, having friends and so forth over, and shooting on the weekends, more recreational, but not as a business. And it really created a lot of heartache for him and tension, especially when they're grandparents. And unfortunately, in this whole process, he ended up suffering a heart attack, because I believe, you know, they believe, we, you know, concerned that, it might be anecdotal, but, you know, that stress really, really has a negative impact on people. I know that we've always said and felt, and I certainly believe, that, you know, the peaceful enjoyment of our property and our neighborhoods is something that's important. And, you know, people, if people want to live in an urban environment next to a freeway, and that's where they move, then you can expect the traffic noise, right? I mean, we've got to be cognizant of that. When you move out to the country and you move farther away from that, I think you expect a certain amount of more quiet or silence or peaceful enjoyment of your property. And it seems to me, no matter where we turn, whether it's the marijuana issues, or, which is, for some people, it's respiratory challenges when it's, you know, a high concentration, or whether it's just the activity that's generated or the people that are creating. But, you know, we've got to be good neighbors. At the end of the day, what makes a great neighborhood and a nice community is everyone respecting one another, and I just don't know how this really fits, you know, commercial activity like this. We did get an email invitation from one of the neighbors there to come down there at a certain time of day on a weekend, and just, you know, on their property, and just listen to that, because it says it starts starting at 9:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night, or something like that. So I'm inclined...
If you drive it, you'll hear it, I can tell you.
Yeah, I'm inclined to take them up on that offer and go out there for myself and just listen, but there's got to be a balance. We just can't have, it's kind of an invasion of privacy, and I agree, the notification issue just can't be a blanket two miles or a mile, or whatever it may be. It's got to be proportional to the impacts, and that resonates with me. So, thank you.
Can I follow up with something?
Generally, we wouldn't do that, but since we don't have a large crowd, please, come on up.
Come up to the mic, though.
Come up to the mic, yeah.
I just wanted to say regarding the shooting, that we have to listen to. Darcy is the one that sent you that email, and I'm in contact with her. But the rifle range came into being in 1968. In 1973, they had about 350 to 400 members. In 2008, they had under 1,000, and we're talking about capping it at 1,000. They didn't do that. In 2018, they grew to 1,900 members. And as of October of 2019, the Rifle Club representatives stated they have 2,700 members. So we hear that all the time. That does not include the law enforcement certifications that have to come out there and use that facility. That 2,700 does not include that. It also doesn't include any guests that the members do bring. So we are hearing it all the time, and especially, much more so in the last two years than we ever did before. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Up next, Les Poole.
Well, good morning, Les Poole. I live here in the county. And would you be sure and let Congressman Blumenauer know that we do have a rule here that when your phone goes off like that, it's $5. It went off twice, so that's 10 bucks.
Put it in the general fund.
Into the fund. And, you know, it's amazing, when I come here, you never know what you're going to hear, and these folks show up with concerns about the gun range. Well, visualize owning property that had the Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue Training Headquarters on one side, the Morse Brothers Quarry on the other, the Town Quarry on one side, the Tuolton Wildlife, and at the corner across the street, the Tri-County Gun Club. And I would encourage the county and these folks to see what was done there, and a lot of this becomes about time, place, and manner. They did a good job, and believe me, Tuolton and Sherwood are right at their doorstep. You talk about peace of mind, I could be out there working on my property, and only in a fall sign before hunting, all of a sudden, out on the weekend, would come all the shotguns. Well, located in the middle of all of this, up against my property, was a longtime dog kennel. Now visualize, 20 guns going off, and then the dogs going crazy, and then the shooting, and then the dogs going crazy, but it was managed time-wise. And so, out there, where it's so wide open in that area, the sound is just going to go forever. So the geography and how you address time, place, and manner is really going to have a lot to do with it. I don't think these folks are opposed to the actual business being there. They've lived here for years and years, and it's become a problem, so how you manage it is certainly going to be a challenge, and I'm not here to offer any advice except to say I've been there. I asked a question last week, and I hopefully can get an answer before the end of the meeting, and it's one that's really, it's floating around out there. The Commission is the fiscal watchdogs for the county and for the staff. That's why you're not on the same floor, you don't intermingle, you don't... intermingle. You don't go down to another department and insert yourself. So my point is, you've got a whole number of departments. And my question was, how far are we over budget? What is the number within reason? I know we don't have an exact number, of how far we came up short, and what we're going to do about it, because of course, we're starting budget season. And it's one of those things that, in today's environment, that can, will not, and cannot be kicked down the road. I'll conclude by saying, I was in Salem yesterday, and the mood aboard the Titanic is different. People are awake, and they don't want to jump in lifeboats and leave Oregon. They want to save the ship, and they're questioning some of the captains. So we really need an answer. We need to know and what we're going to do about it. What are we going to do about it? Because the clock is ticking, I know that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to answer any of those, Ray?
I actually could.
Let's answer. Let's answer those.
All of this has been shared in the county budget committee hearings last May, which my video message is still online, and my printed message to the budget committee, which you can read. And the county budget committee meets next Wednesday, and later today, the packet for that will be posted online, that the public can read. But last year, well, the county has always balanced its budget. But we do have what's called a structural deficit, which means on an ongoing basis, our expenditures are outpacing our revenues in the general fund. General fund, as you know, is defined as property taxes. That is a very small part of the entire county budget. The general fund is approximately, this current fiscal year, $134 million, which comes from property taxes. The entire county budget is $1.1 billion. So only 134 million of that total amount is property taxes. The rest is state and federal dollars that come directly to the county for a specific purpose. So within the general fund of 134 million, this current fiscal year, there is a $12 million deficit, which we covered by asking every department to take approximately a 5% cut in their general fund dollars. Some took a little more, some took a little less, but we wiped out that $12 million deficit. Not entirely, we were still $5 million short. And I recommended, and the budget committee agreed, to use one-time dollars to close that gap. Not any contingency or reserve funds. We are well in, we are well above what the commission has directed staff to maintain in our contingency and reserves. That stays exactly as it has. I used one-time marijuana dollars to close that gap of 5 million. This current fiscal year, the last time we did a budget forecast, in October, it showed an $8 million deficit for the fiscal year that starts July 1, 2020. You will receive an updated forecast next Wednesday. It appears to be lower than that, but we're still finalizing those documents today. So with that, I have asked departments to prepare reduction packages between 5 and 15%. Once those are in, I will review those with department leadership, and we will then make a recommendation to the budget committee. I've never said that departments will take a 15% cut, never at all. It may be hopefully around 5%, maybe less, maybe a little more. I don't know that answer yet. But the budget committee will talk about that next week. So I do feel that I, as your administrator and your budget officer, has been as transparent as possible with staff and with the public. But I welcome questions at any time, and I hope this addresses your questions less. Happy to talk to you offline as well.
So what you're telling us is that you're taking proactive action in the 2021 budget to assure that we are not in a deficit.
Absolutely. And thank you. This year, I enacted a hiring freeze that had an exception process, but I've asked departments, if at all possible, to keep vacant positions vacant. And I admit, that has put a burden on our existing staff, and I have apologized. I wish there was another way, but I'd rather be able to have our employees stay employed, but ask them perhaps to do a little bit more if positions can stay vacant. But on essential positions, like our sheriff's deputies and other employees, we have filled those positions. But the hiring freeze has also saved some money because of the vacancies. But yes, we are taking proactive action all year to make sure we have a balanced budget, which is required by law, but also to work towards a sustainable budget, so that every year we don't have this issue going forward.
Paul?
Yeah, well, coincidentally, I mean, that was what I was going to bring up today in my comments, but in another slight related, but a similar vein. And I'm not going to cover that right now. I'm going to wait till my comments at the end of the meeting. But I will say that, now that this has been broached, because of the publicity around this recently, I just wanted just a couple clarifying statements that I think are really important, so to put things in context. We've had some budget committee members, including myself, point out this issue, this structural change. And of course, we didn't have the ability, or our hands on the books, or our hands on a computer keyboard, or any of the data, to know when our expenses start outpacing our revenues. You know, we're in the two lines crossed, those two trend lines crossed. But we felt it, and we knew it, and we knew it was coming. And for years, some of the budget committee's members, who, most of which, if not all, are no longer on the budget committee. But that was called, that was pointed out, and it often went, as I felt, dismissed, ignored. And it came front and center at the last budget committee, or the last budget cycle a year ago, when it was front and center in front of us. And we knew that. And it was public. And Gary, you're absolutely right. You identified it. You inherited this problem. A lot of our staff inherit this problem. So this is no negative representation of any of our staff. So I want to make that perfectly clear. But what, I guess what bothers me a little bit, is that recently, it's been, because of election season, or whatever it may be, whatever it is, is that suddenly it's a new finding. It's like a new revelation. Folks, it's not new. It's not new. And I think probably what bothers a number of the former volunteers on the budget committee is that they were dismissed when bringing this up. And that pains me. That really pains me, because we could have made the adjustments and not scaled up when it was time to scale down. We went the wrong way. And so now we need to recalibrate, and it's going to be difficult. But, you know, for those out there that are saying that they identified it, or they saw it, frankly, they weren't there at the time. And so I think we need to put things in context. It's not as though they discovered something and we were found, you know, like, oh, my goodness, or that any crime was committed, or anything else. No such thing. There's missing funds. No, there's no missing funds. Misappropriated funds. No, there's, if there is, someone's better bring that forward to us. If someone knows of something like that, whether it's an employee here, or anyone, we have a hotline, we have a report line, where any whistleblower can go, our next point, and report that. If someone's holding on evidence of some crime, they have a responsibility to bring it forward. There is no crime. If there is, please bring it forward. I just found it to be a little bit disturbing that suddenly it was kind of portrayed as a new finding, where it's not a new finding at all. But I'll speak more about that later.
Okay, Ken?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the effort you did in reaching out to the leadership of the nine labor unions that we have, in working through this problem, and the assistance that they're providing you, as well as reaching out to employees in general and asking for their suggestions. Again, I appreciate the proactive approach. Should not be an issue of casting blame. It should be an issue of fixing the problem. There is an old expression in Japanese industry, it's fix the problem, not the blame. So I think you're moving in the right direction, and we will tighten our belts and get through this.
All right, Sonya?
Yeah, since we're all commenting on this, I thought I would take the opportunity. So I have looked at this issue as we need to go on a diet. And I'm speaking only for myself. We haven't met with the budget committee fully, but I would like us to stay on a diet, because I want to make sure that we are sustainable. So I have very much, although I was not happy when I learned, gosh, it was almost, Gary, you had just started. You've been with us a year, so it was just after you started as our county administrator, that our new budget staff had forecasted that we were not keeping pace with our expenses. That did not make me happy or pleased, because I was somewhat assured that we were keeping pace prior to that discovery. But what I have appreciated is we discover it, we get proactive, we take all the steps, we're being responsible, because we must be sustainable in our budgeting. So I look forward to meeting with the budget committee and continue our good fiscal health in Clackamas County. So thank you, Gary.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is a public hearing. And what is this public hearing about, Gary?
Chair, this is a second reading of ordinance number 02-2020, amending county code chapter 2.05, personnel policies and procedures for Clackamas County employees and declaring an emergency. Andrew Naris from county council will present.
Yes, this is deletion of some language in the code related to limited-term appointments. It will allow us to extend the term of those appointments to three years, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. So at this point, any questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
That is, I appreciate proactive move on this. And again, the union's support in doing this, so that we don't end up permanently employing employees that we don't have the funding to support. So...
This was also a cost-saving proactive budget decision to help you help with our budget. So thank you for being open to this.
All right, open the public hearing. Ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Let's kind of line up and take a number. Oh, wait, there's nobody here, except our outstanding Krista Wolf, who as a matter of fact, knew and worked on resolving this problem, and identified the issue. And I appreciate the work you've done in our financial department, and making us aware of this problem. I think, I'm proud of having you here and working with you on various issues. Thank you. So close public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
It's moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. I'm trying to read if, yeah, go ahead and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is ordinance number 02-2020, and ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees.
Any further discussion? Did I already, did we move in second?
We moved in second, but we didn't vote.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, I'll read this again. It's ordinance number 20-20, 02-2020, and ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.5, Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt ordinance number 02-2020, amending county code, Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees and declaring an emergency.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 02-2020, amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter 2.05, Personnel Policies and Procedures for Clackamas County Employees and declaring emergency. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. And the next item is a consent agenda. Ask the clerk to read the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval for agreement number 9639, a lease agreement between Clackamas Health Centers and Gladstone School District for rental of clinical space. Approval of a construction contract between Clackamas County and Baylin Construction for the Clackamas County Children's Commission Head Start New Classroom Project. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for the Hepatitis A Breakout Prevention Project. Approval of a personal service contract with Grin In-Home Care, Doing Business as Comfort Keepers for Oregon Project for Independence In-Home Care Services. And approval of a personal service contract with Mount Hood Home Care Services for the Oregon Project for Independence In-Home Care Services. Under our Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a resolution delegating authority to the Director of the Department of Transportation and Development to approve renewal agreements with the United States Department of Agriculture for the purpose of compliance with the migratory bird mitigation. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Camby to transfer permitting authority and maintenance responsibilities for a portion of South Ivy Street to the city. Under our Finance Department, approval of a resolution acknowledging financial statement findings for fiscal year 2019, and describing corrective actions in accordance with ORS 297466. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And under Business and Community Services, approval of a contract with Bryant Logging for the Family Camp Timber Sale Harvest and Logging Hauling. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Yes?
I don't wish to remove an item, but I did want to comment on one. So in this consent agenda, I, this consent agenda, there is the approval of the contract with Bryant Logging, Inc., for the Family Camp Timber Sale Harvest and Log Hauling. And I just want to highlight that we did have this brought up to us at issues, and the commission approved bringing it to this business meeting. I abstained from that vote, because I had read in the paper that there was concerns about us logging that land based on the need for us to have public policies that promote climate and carbon sequestration. And I've done some, you know, talking around to folks in the community. And what I just want to emphasize is that we are moving forward with this, and I'm not making any effort to stop this sale or logging. But I'm so pleased that we have, and we each have one of these right here, this is our Performance Clackamas County Plan. And one of our policy perspectives here is carbon neutrality, including in developing, implementing a climate action plan. So in process now, there is an effort to look at, so if we have trees, which we have plenty of trees in our county-owned land, what is the value if we decide to sequester that carbon? We don't know the answer to that. But we are looking at that, along with many other efforts to save energy, to transition our energy, and looking at what we can do as a county. And so I look forward to the future, now that we have this Performance Clackamas, and we have these policy perspectives, that when these issues come before us, we deliberately take the time, because these are important, important discussions, to really analyze all of the facts together as a commission, and have really robust conversations. Because this, these issues are here now, and they are going to be with us in the future. So that's all I wanted to say on that.
Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I'd like to encourage Commissioner Fisher to join me at a Forest Advisory Board meeting and meet our forester, and listen to what their explanation of some of this is. But I'll remind everybody that the 3,000 or so acres that we have in forest is what supports our county parks. And at this point in time, we don't have any other way of doing that. Now, I do know that the staff are looking into a carbon sequestration plan to see if selling carbon credits would help us. And that may well be a way of monetizing this twice, which is, could be a real plus. In fact, I've kind of wondered why the timber industry hasn't figured that one out yet, because really would allow them to make, in effect, make more money. And I'm not sure they get that aspect of it yet. But please come to a Forest Advisory Board meeting and talk to the, we're one of three counties that has a professional forester on board. Most do not. And it's been an education, I'll put it that way. So...
Paul?
Yeah, I just want to just add that, you know, when this did, as Commissioner Fisher pointed out, when this did come under a work session, that, or I think maybe it was issues that this came up. You know, I have, you know, like you rely on me for transportation, and, you know, we rely on Commissioner Humberton for the Fair Board stuff and so on. We all have our responsibilities. I do know that both Commissioner Humberton and Commissioner Schrader, and Commissioner Bernard have been active in this on different committees. Bernard have been active in this on different committees with regard to natural resources such as the timber things, in one capacity or another over time. So, I have, I have relied upon that. When I first came on as a commissioner nine years ago, I did a deep dive on this, and went to some of those forestry meetings and went on all of those things, just to kind of get a sense of what that was about. So, I think Commissioner Humberton's advice is good advice, and I would encourage everyone to look, you know, look deep into this. And again, I am relying upon their advice in this. I do know that there are activities that replenish, replant, and do a lot, and, you know, there's a lot of analysis on that. But I think sometimes we get carried away with, like, you know, the newest or the latest and greatest, and as I'm walking around looking at buildings, and buildings that were built long, long, a long, long time ago, which were frankly constructed of CLT and all kinds of timber materials, and you look at some, there's a, you know, most lumber, most lumber is, is, finds a life in which it's sequestered. We're at, we're at a dais, we're looking at lumber. This is sequestered, right, right in front of us, we're surrounded by it. And I, I point that out because the other, the other, and naturally what we do, the other conflict we have is that we need to build a lot of housing, and we either take a, a, a carbon-intensive material like concrete, or a carbon-sequestered material like timber or, or wood to build our housing, that we've got this housing crisis, and we're going to be building a lot of housing. So somehow, we've got to realize that there's a give and take. There's a balance. We need to strike as responsible, environmentally responsible balance as we can, to make sure that all our practices, you know, find that right balance, and that's just what we do. So, it's one thing to have a purist approach, but on the other hand, that might mean that a lot of people go without housing.
I also think, you know, I, I've been interested in this subject since I got here, been out to a couple of sites. The diversification that we, when we replant is really important as we look to rising temperatures and the impact on our forests. The fact that we're diversifying the, the type of what we replant is really key to prevention of fires and to the health of our forests. And I was actually quite amazed at the work that we do at the county, which is far beyond what others do with our setbacks and various things to preserve the temperature and creeks and, and runoff. We, we've done an amazing job, and, and for that reason, you know, the other thing is true is that, I, I don't remember the percentage, can you probably know, of forest in Clackamas County that is not harvested is far beyond what we are harvesting occasionally to fund our parks district. So, I, I really am pretty proud of the hard work that our, our folks do, and I remember one particular one where it was up near Welch's, and our forester actually stood on somebody's deck and adjusted the, what they were going to harvest, so that didn't have an impact on that citizen's house, his view, view. And that's amazing. What they did, what they do is, what we do is, we listen, we adjust, and we try to do the best job we can to preserve the assets and of the, of the forests and of the citizens who live near and around, so, pretty amazing work. Paul?
Yeah, that's a good point. I know you mentioned that before, that, that's really, the other thing I was thinking of when it comes back to housing is that, you know, as I pointed to the dais, I pointed to all the lumber products we have around us that are essentially sequestering carbon. When I, when I think about sometimes the activity, and I always talked about this when we talk about this carbon issue, and I always talk about the activity. So, the activity of tearing down neighborhoods and destroying homes, really, that sequestered carbon is destroyed, and so to speak, it's no longer sequestered often. And then we spend a whole lot of materials and energy, building, and money, building these things, and displacing people and making it worse. I mean, we are, we talk about conflicts, if we actually step back and look at what we're doing, we would be doing it differently, and we would be doing it, I didn't plan on going on here, but it just struck me, we'd be doing it on the sunrise corridor, where we're not tearing down houses, and we're not tearing down trees, and we can actually build it in the most sustainable way, in the most logical way, that has the least amount of impacts, and won't gentrify or, and displace people. It is, it is the best possible investment we could make in light of the housing crisis, in light of all, all of these things, and yet, we're not allowed to do that.
Yeah, I, I would talk about that too, and that, that is true, that, you know, not only for emergency resources, should there be a major earthquake, the sunrise is that corridor where those emergency resources would be brought, but the fact that we don't have the same grid system that our regional partners do have really puts us at a disadvantage. And, you know, I, Paul and I both spent our lives in the automotive repair industry, and I've shoved many a pipe up an exhaust pipe to measure the exhaust that comes out, and I can tell you that in idle, at idle, much more fuel is wasted than, than when you're driving down the road at 55 or so. And so, that's, that's the challenge we, we have. I look forward to electric cars, electrification of cars, yeah, but they still do have an impact on roads. So, yeah, we're, we're going pretty far on this consent agenda. So, Paul, let's finish up with Paul.
Yeah, yeah, I, I just want to just say, and I, I mean this, I, I don't mean this to anyone in the room or my colleagues here at the dais, but if you actually look at what we're doing, it seems like the, well, there's, maybe it's the politics of it, but there's, you know, call it hypocrisy, you know, call it conflicts, we're conflicted, but there is a level of hypocrisy in all of this, and I don't mean that anyone, again, in the room or at this dais, but it, it drives me bananas sometimes that we have, we say one thing, and if we're really, really, really truly mean that, when saying we, not us, but, but, you know, certain other bodies, jurisdictions, or elected officials, we really, really drill down to that, it doesn't seem to be as, as genuine as one might thought it, it sounded like. And it's time to just point that out, and I, what really just bothers me more than anything is when we, when we parade youth up, and granted, they're, it's their future, right? We're here, I'm here, for our, for the future generations, but sometimes what they say is what, what they have been told, and there's some, there's so much inaccuracies to that sometimes, and they're right on, but one thing I want to make sure is that, when we're up here, no matter what we are, especially with youth, that we're as accurate and as, as science-based or factual-based as possible, and not trying to, sometimes it seems like exploiting youth for political gain.
All right, so have I asked for a motion yet? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Yeah, sure, let's have a.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, we'll move on to county administrator updates.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I like to always share good news that goes on here at Clackamas County with our great employees, and today is no exception. First, last month, the Oregon City School Board unanimously voted to begin dispensing contraceptives at their school-based health center. The decision addressed equity, removed barriers to health, and prioritized health as a cornerstone of education. This kind of policy change was possible thanks to the collaboration of many groups, including staff from our Health, Housing and Human Services Department, particularly our Health Centers and Public Health Divisions. Our staff developed a public health impact paper and made a compelling presentation to the Oregon School Board, the Oregon City School Board, that helped them make an informed decision. Expanding the number of reproductive health providers in Clackamas County is one of our public health division's managing-for results strategic priorities. So, thank you to our staff for contributing to that decision. Next, I'd like to share a note shared about the responsiveness of our North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Staff, NCPRD, regarding notification of a wild blackberry bush enroaching on private property. So, back in January 30th, County Resident Dawn, whose property was in question, alerted NCPRD about the overzealous bramble that was spilling over from NCPRD land onto his land. And two hours later, he heard back that a crew would be dispatched to take care of it. So, a week later, Dawn wrote back, "Wow, thank you, they're cutting back the blackberries as I write this. NCPRD has always been so responsive, don't ever change." So, thanks to Dawn for sending that note, thanks to our staff at NCPRD for their service in addressing this thorny situation.
Oh.
Thank you for laughing, all right.
Thanks for pointing it out.
That's going to stick with me for a while.
Very good, all right. Finally, let me keep moving on. Finally, the county received some great accolades from our staff at the Law Library. Now, did you know the Law Library is a county department?
Yes.
It's down by the county courthouse, and any member of the public may use the Law Library at no charge. So, one resident recently shared how much he valued the efforts of our Law Library staff, and this person wrote, "Because of the thorough and attentive assistance of Law Librarians Angela Hajashimi and Bob Cooper, I was able to find Oregon-revised statutes specifically related to the issue I am addressing. I also learned how to research case law. Doing research that you are not familiar with can be frustrating without proper guidance and patience from the personnel that are providing it. Angela and Bob treated me with respect and dignity and made me feel less stressed about learning and more focused on accomplishing." So, I want to thank Bob and Angela from our Law Library staff and the Director Jennifer for the good work they do every day for our public. Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, thank you. I, I took law in college and learned how to do a lot of that stuff, it's been a long time, but I know that the person who's going to speak next is a little more familiar with the law, because I've never been one, I don't play one on television, but she is. So, Sonya, you're up.
Oh, thank you, Chair Bernard. So, speaking of law, that's good, that's a nice segue to what's been on my mind, which is collaboration. We've been doing a lot of that lately, haven't we, Chair Bernard? We are working very, very hard in the region with the citizen and elected officials, government, philanthropy, business community, on an effort that's titled "Here Together," and we are looking to find a solution to reduce homelessness in the region. I don't think there's ever been a time where the region, the elected officials in the region have been working more collaboratively than now on this issue. It seemed, and with the business community, it seems that we are all on the same page, and it's pretty remarkable. So, I was also reminded about collaboration. This morning, I had the wonderful opportunity, while Commissioner Schrader, who is our liaison with Greater Portland, Inc., was meeting with Congressman Blumenhour on housing, I took her place at Greater Portland, Inc.'s annual meeting this morning titled "Igniting Innovations Through Education and Industry Partnerships." So, I wasn't able to stay for all of the program, because I needed to rush back here to be part of our business community meeting, which of course, we have more collaboration here at the dais. But I did take a snapshot of a slide, which I'm going to ask Mary to put up on the screen. I was really moved by, these are the businesses in the region that Greater Portland, Inc. has recruited to the region within the last short period of time, I think it's the last couple of years, I might be wrong about that actual date, but I was very impressed with that, because it really takes the region working together to do these important efforts as far as business goes. And then, one other little update I wanted to give to my colleagues is that we, gosh, was it two years ago? Gary, you may remember this, because you were our Public Affairs and you were working with us, but Mike Volk, a resident of Clackamas County, who's also on our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Council, has a friend named Darren Umberger that lives in Pendleton, who designed electric charging stations, and through a collaborative effort, we were able to bring these electric charging stations to our parks and some of our public buildings. Now, you may say, "Well, what is an electric charging station?" These were our use for people that use wheelchairs or scooters for mobility to get around, they are a supercharge. So, where people can be stranded in their device if they are not charged, we have the ability for, for an individual to use the charging station, get supercharged, and be on their way. So, this morning, as I came in, I saw a gentleman using our charging station in the lobby, and I just thought more about the incredible collaborations that we do to create change and make things better for the people of Clackamas County. And so, with that, we will pass it on to, who is next up? That is Martha Schrader, who is with Congressman Earl Blumenhour, probably getting wet at the Willamette Falls waterfall there, and so Commissioner Savas is up.
Yeah, so as I kind of mentioned earlier, I wanted to talk about, last, you know, last week, I left off about, you know, essentially, the theme of valuing our volunteers and situations where maybe they're not so valued, and I want to build on that a little bit as it relates to the budget. And I kind of mentioned earlier, through the years, I've had the great pleasure of working with, I thought, very collaborative people, brilliant people that were members of our Budget Committee, and they take two weeks out of their life typically, to spend the entire day and, and sometimes into the evenings, working on the budget. And through the years, they have identified a number of issues, and they have had their list of questions, and they have made their inquiries, and I would say that, you know, for the most part, some, a lot of, a lot of the questions that they were, they were asked, you know, the basic questions were answered. However, some of the deeper questions that drove more into our systems, and some of our questions that, that were directed at certain departments, weren't so thoroughly answered, and, and they have given us advice, a lot of that advice, or in questions that went unanswered, all, you know, a lot of that's public record, as a matter of fact. And, you know, as I've watched the Commission change, you know, it seems as though that the Budget Committee has changed, and, you know, it seems like if some Budget Committee member points something out, then that might irritate a certain department, department or department head, you know, it seems to be that there was, I'm just going to say it, it's just flat blunt, there just seemed to be an effort to remove that person, or there was retribution, or that person was undermined, or that person had, had basically been, their, their character being questioned. But really, what they were raising was valid, and that, that came to the forefront, you know, last year, when staff really did discover that what we were, what we were all saying all along was actually real. And I, I, I can't tell you how frustrating that is when you were a volunteer, because I've been there, I've been on the other side. And last evening, I spoke to a person who, who's also not related to budget, but on one of our other committees, who feels awfully distraught when their work is not really recognized, when they are either dismissed or ignored, and what they have is valid or it's not seriously considered. You know, we have a number of, we call them the ABCs, our advisory boards and commissions, that, and they, these people spend their own time, they drive here, they walk here, however they get here, their own time, their own dime, and they, and their own sacrifice to help advise us. And, and there are times, critical, some of the critical ones, such as our Budget Committee, such as our, our Audit Committee, or our Planning Commission, a number of things, and, and, you know, certainly, there are times when we make, I think, some intelligent decisions, you know, we use what they did, we use their work, and sometimes we modify it, that, that's sound. But what I'm talking to one is, are the ones that, specifically the budget here, have pointed out these things, and, and they're, they're not out there, they're not out there running up and down and hollering in the hallways and writing newspaper articles or op-eds, but they're just quietly, they're quietly doing something different today, and not really feeling good about the role and the years that they've spent in their time. And I just want, I just, I just think it's so important to honor our, our volunteers and recognize them, and actually take them seriously. We need, we should take our comments, even our own comments amongst ourselves, seriously, because that's what teamwork's all about. We are not, we're not professionals at everything, there's only five of us here, we all have our, through our walk of lives, our experiences, and our expertise is, is limited. and our expertise is limited. It doesn't cover the entire bandwidth of what either our staff does, or their education, or what our volunteers do. And that's why they're there. And we ought to recognize that and respect that, whether it's forestry, our forestry folks, or our search and rescue volunteers, or whatever it may be. We ought to recognize those skills and those strengths, and the savings that they provide to us, and, and respect that and honor that. And again, it pains me when that, that, their value or their input is not valued and respected.
All right. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a busy week this week. But I will be brief, so we can move on to other things. I attended the French Prairie Forum last night. The primary subject matter last night was, was public safety. And we had representatives from the city of Wilsonville, and as well as the city of Donald, and Marion County Commissioners, and, and police officers and public safety people from those communities, plus one of our representatives from our emergency management team was also there. Lot of focus on what will happen when there's a big earthquake, and how people will be able to help each other. Charbonneau's been doing, really doing a great job of preparing their folks. And they're also recognizing that because of the geography, that they may find themselves either helping or being helped by people in Marion County. So it was a way of recognizing that, you know, really, when this, if this, if and when that happens, it's, we're all going to be in this together. And they're, they're preparing for the idea that if Clackamas County can't help because of the geography of the situation, that they, they may be dependent upon Marion County or vice versa. So it was, as far as I was concerned, that was good planning. I attended the Red Barn, what they call Red Barn Baby Day in support of the Future Farmers of America, enjoyed a good dinner with the Clark's Grange and the veterans out at the Veterans Village this weekend. And we're definitely doing good work out there. As people know, we've moved 19 people into, into permanent housing. We're going to expand at least to some degree, so we can serve more people. But to a person, when you talk to the veterans that are out there, they, they are truly appreciative of what we're doing. And this little First Friday group of veterans that I have breakfast with, a couple of volunteers from that group are now going out there, doing haircuts, teaching people cooking skills, and other things like that. So it's veterans reaching out to help other veterans, and I'm appreciative of that. Attended our Fair Board meeting. From our perspective, the biggest issue that was being discussed was the Oregon Fair Association's proposal to the state legislature regarding a request for $900,000 for, for funding for some of our county fairs around the state, as well as a $250,000 grant request to do a thorough evaluation of the capital needs of all of the fairgrounds in the state. We don't know if, if that's going to happen, but the biggest focus will be on getting the grant, not necessarily the cash. Because with, next year, when we go to the, the state legislature and really talk about capital improvements, we want to have a good, solid study to stand on and show, show an accurate assessment of the needs of the fairs around the state. I will say that because we're in Clackamas County, and we are a both urban and rural county, we may have a little better perspective than, than our totally urbanized neighbors do on this issue. We talk about after-school programs for kids in urbanized areas and suburban, suburban areas. We sometimes forget that the FFA, Future Farmers of America, 4H, and other groups like that, provide that same kind of after-school and weekend activity for our rural kids. And as one of the judges from one of the rural counties reminded me, he's never had a Future Farmer of America or 4H student in his courtroom. So, there is a lot of good that's done there, and these county fairs are part of that. So hopefully, the legislature will be respective of that, or respectful of that, and, and help out. I attended the Eagle Creek-Barton CPO, and you've already heard about some of the issues that they're concerned with. Obviously, the gun club is one of them, and problem properties is another one, and those are being worked on. And I will leave it at that, and go to the dogs. This is Cheyenne. She is looking for her forever retirement home. She's a girl who likes a quieter home, where she can take nice naps on a cozy bed, go for a leisurely walk or two daily, get lots of petting and love. Cheyenne enjoys spending time with her friends at the shelter and their offices, where it is nice and quiet. She likes to be around her friends, so if you are home a lot, she would think that is fantastic. She has taken good care of her bed and toys at the shelter, and she hopes that there are some stuffed animals at her new home that she can snuggle with. She loves to play fetch, and she will bring the ball back to you every time. She's just a lovely girl, and she's ready to be in a home for good. For more information about Cheyenne or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ken. So, I've been very busy. We had our 18th T2020 meeting last night. I could have probably called it in. But I, I have, I just want to talk a little bit about collaboration. I got a call from Hillsborough. They, they have a $1.3 million study they want to do. It's actually on the Highway 26. That, of course, is also Washington County's interest, and it does go through Multnomah County. So there is interest on what you could do to provide transit opportunities on, on Highway 26, you know, or bicycle pad, if, if there's an opportunity to do some trail connections, or various things like that. And, and I said, you know, I'd appreciate, I, I would support your plan. But on the sunrise, you know, and sea-to-sea, we have people pushing back. Sea-to-sea is Clackamas to Columbia. So it's off of, it goes from Happy Valley and connects with Gresham. I'd appreciate your support on, on funding of those programs. You know, we voted unanimously to support Sunrise at a level far below what we actually need to build the project, but would be, get us on the way to building the project with some auxiliary improvements. But, and, and on sea-to-sea, we voted to move that forward. And then, I hear that there's an effort to, you know, not do that. Well, we were told to meet and, and vote, and it was unanimous. It started out zero support, and it got to the point that it was unanimous support. But, so, when Hillsborough, and also Denny Dolson, the mayor of Beaverton, called me, and talked about Sunrise and various other projects, you know, and in the end, I, I kind of decided that they're, you know, I'm going to support their, their projects. Highway 43, by the way, is one of the projects that I asked for support from them on the highway, Highway 43. But there, there's also some big projects like 217, which is like 130 million. If we, if we put all, all that money there, the balance of our share versus their share, which isn't, you know, an absolute, would really be thrown off. And so I said, we need more money for the Sunrise. And they asked how much. I said, well, 400 million would be nice. So, you know, we're working collaboratively. We've met with Washington County Commissioners, we've met with Multnomah County Commissioners, and coordinated our message. The problem is, the message outside may not be as supportive. Then, we're also working on this "Here Together", which is a proposal. By the way, both of these measures will go to the voters to decide. And "Here Together" is, I want to thank the voters, of course, for the, the housing measure, which gives us in the region, within the urban growth boundary, an opportunity to build more affordable housing. The "Here Together" proposal is supportive housing. It's the housing-first model, I would say, and it's key to resolving homelessness. The challenge we're having, I mean, and providing supportive housing, the challenge we're having is, how do we pay for it? And I, and I think that most citizens would agree that property tax burden is pretty high, and we, we don't want to go there. And so what are some of the other options? And right now, we don't have a final decision on what those options are going to be. Met, we'll work with Metro, and we were kind of shocked to see the calculation that they came up with, and was, was, and what they did was actually wrong. And so we're back at the table. So next week, there'll be a hearing at Metro to finally finalize this ballot measure. And I don't know what that's going to be, what that funding mechanism's going to be. I've had emergency meeting after emergency meeting. I've got an emergency meeting on Friday to, to work with the Portland Business Alliance to come up with something that they would support, and the region would support. And, you know, there's 60 partners, hundreds of, they represent hundreds, maybe thousands of people, and businesses. And we're trying to come up with a solution, because the number one issue in the survey was homelessness. You know, people not only feel terrible about the fact that there are families and children out there living on the street in tents along freeways, or tarps along freeways, or whatever, doorways. It, it has an impact on the economy, has an impact on tourism, it has an impact on those people who live this life. And we need to do something about it. And I'd say this group, which has been working for two years, has done outstanding work. And like Paul said, I want to thank all the volunteers, not only this group, but all the volunteers that, frankly, we could not survive in Clackamas County without the outstanding, outstanding volunteers that we have. And up on the mountain, the Portland Mountain Rescue and the various other groups have saved lives, and we need to thank them and be, for their work, their efforts, their, the spending of their own money, gas, equipment, risking their lives. There's, there's nothing greater than risking your life. So I'd like to thank them. And for the final word, Ken?
Yes, just came through, Mr. Chairman, that I, I felt that this should be made available to the general public. Moments ago, the House unanimously passed House Bill 4150, creating a public corporation for the Willamette Falls locks. Numerous legislators spoke in support of the bill. And having already passed the Joint Transportation Committee, the bill now heads directly to the Senate floor for a possible vote early next week, where we hope that it doesn't get derailed by any walkout.
So what, what exactly is this?
This is to form a public corporation, which will be the fourth public corporation in existence here in, in Oregon, to manage and operate the Willamette Falls locks as we go forward.
So in our efforts to, to make this happen, the federal government would love to get rid of the locks, willing to give us some money, not enough, to, to get rid of the locks, but they needed a place to give it. And it's, people aren't clamoring to do this. So this corporation will, will probably assume that Congress does what they're, they promised, will take the locks under their control. And the, and the state of Oregon is contributing money to this
Yes.
process. So hopefully, those locks will be open. And there's a lot of businesses upriver, and there's tourism opportunities. So I hope this happens. I guess we'd need the governor to sign it, and the federal government to transfer it along with a check. And with that, thank you very much, and have a good weekend, and we're adjourned.